Okay, we'll go ahead and get started and open up the Steering Committee meeting. And I don't think we have to do attendance or anything official like that for the work session, so we'll go ahead and just turn it over to you guys.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning and Urban Design. Beth Dufek is here with me. The purpose of this meeting is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Lebanon and 2040 Steering Committee. We think Rob Hess will be here shortly, and we're expecting Gary Marks in a bit. So, the purpose of this is, we're almost all the way through the process, and we're scheduled to be at the City Council on June 10th for, hopefully for adoption of this vision. And we want to make sure that the City Council has a chance to review where we are, how we got here, and give us feedback to make sure that if we don't have it just right, we can adjust it before it's in front of you for deliberation, so hopefully it'll be right on June 10th. And that's the purpose of this, and we, the Steering Committee has done a great job of giving feedback and guiding the process. We thought this would be a great time for Council members to ask questions or offer feedback. Of course, a couple of members of the Council have been on the Steering Committee, so it's all very well interconnected, but this is just an opportunity to make sure we're all clear where we are. And I have some slides to walk through to kind of explain where we are, and then I want to go through a draft, a proposed draft of the Vision 2040 for Lebanon. And then, after I go through the whole thing, then basically walk through it one phrase at a time and give everybody a chance for feedback. So, that's the purpose of what we're trying to get done in the next two hours. That sound like what everybody expected?
Sounds good.
Good. So, just a quick overview of where we're going is, we're going to give you a quick process update. While I'm doing this, Beth is going to hang that wall graphic back there over those two posters, so don't mind that character in the back. We're going to give you an update on outreach to date. Give you, you know, Beth, you want to wait to do that until we've done the outreach to date, because you have a starring role in that part of the presentation. We're going to give you, we've had this online survey going for about a month in town until midnight last night. We want to give you an update on the results of that. We want to share a draft vision statement and a number of core value statements, and then remind you of this, and have a discussion about the steps between here and June 10th, when the process will be complete. So, update on the process. When we first came to the Council in November, we showed you this process diagram of our intent of how we were going to go forward on the process, and now we are almost at the finish line. You can see the gray part on three-quarters of the thing is the part that's already happened. And then, we're right now at the joint meeting in May, and then the City Council meeting in June. What we've done so far is two online surveys. We've done a lot of targeted outreach to different communities through one-on-one conversations through focus groups, small group outreach at the Chamber and the Boys and Girls Clubs and other things, really a ton of community outreach, four meetings of the Steering Committee, two meetings of a vision sounding board. So, we've had lots of interaction with the community so far in the process, and we're almost at the finish. So, Beth, do you want to give a highlight of the outreach to date? You're going to have to sit down at one of these microphones. Maybe you can emulate the mayor.
I were mayor.
Hit the button so the red light comes on.
There we go. Ooh, how official. So, I've been here visiting with people in your community, and along with Andres Mantilla, who by the way can't be here because he became a father for the first time at the end of April, so little Sebastian was born, and that has left Andres in Seattle. So, we've been coming since November, and we had a kind of a multi-tiered process where we launched a website, we set up, and we just put basic information on there about how people could get involved in the process. And then, we asked the city often to post it on Facebook, and Gary was very kind to send out emails often, and we built a really good database. We have about 400 contacts through people who would sign up at our outreach events, so it's growing. Also, let's see, so then we came in January and February, and we did some targeted outreach where we went to, we had some drop-ins at the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce, and as we drive through Lebanon every time we come here, I'm like, oh yeah, we went there. And Brian was actually remarking on the name of the knitting store called Mitty Gritty, and I get to say, oh, well, I went there, because I did, I did a critters event for Shelley. And so, we get a lot of really good information through these little small intimate groups. And from that, from all of our targeted outreach, we then selected, the Steering Committee decided its reach wasn't far enough, so we formed a vision sounding board, and we used our targeted outreach to really decide, you know, kind of figure out who's engaged and from what industry needs to be involved in this process. So, in that process, we did a survey, very open-ended questions. We had 317 people return that first survey. We did paper and online. We also, we used that to form our focus groups or our focus areas. And then, we came back in April, and we were at the Biz Expo where we talked to, between me, Linda, Gary, and Wyatt, we talked to about 300 people. 177 people gave us their opinion on those boards that are in the back. And we were not shy at the Business Expo. If people said they didn't have an opinion, we said, I bet you do. And we chased them down, and we got really good opinions. And really the basic information, like, we didn't stop them and ask what they want Lebanon 2040. Well, that's not true. We asked them what they want Lebanon to be in year 2040, and sometimes if they were hungry, they would give us restaurant names, or depending on, you know, very artistic. We have one that's a beautiful picture back there about more arts, and she was really thoughtful on how she drew that. A lot about the kids and the schools, and so it was really, I felt like I got to know a lot of people at the Biz Expo, and the idea was to talk to them quickly, and sometimes it wasn't quick. They actually had a lot they wanted to say, which was really great. And then, we had the community meeting where we had 80 people. Some of you came to that for a little while. We did the clicker surveys, where we did, we launched the second survey on that day, and we had 80 people really getting engaged, and had a good kind of town hall meeting afterwards talking about engagement, and could everybody really get to that community meeting? And that was at the Boys and Girls Club. And then, we launched the second survey, and we closed it at midnight last night, and we have 366 responses. And I learned last night that Sabrina Alexander has a handful of Spanish surveys that she thought she had to input herself. So, I said, no, 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 we'll come pick them up. So, we're going to have more input after this about what the Spanish-speaking community was thrilled about that. So, did I cover it all without looking? Yay!
So, then you want to go to a quick overview of the results?
These are the results from the open-ended survey that we went through this round once already, which is how we formed the second survey. So, really, what you value about Lebanon, that it's a small town, if we ask you, describe Lebanon in one word, everybody, this is home, really feeling a sense of connection to Lebanon. We did, you know, we have to ask the negative stuff too, so what are your fears? And we talked about drugs and the education system crumbling. And then, when we asked them, what should we focus on? You know, we can't do everything right away, where should we start? And a lot, you know, of surprising one came up, the library, really as an asset, and hopefully keep using it as an asset into the future is the sentiment we took from that, and then focusing on businesses and the schools. And then, in 2040, everybody, you know, it's small town is a value now, and it's going to be a value in the future, so I think you'll see that reflected in the draft vision statement that we're going to go through in a little bit.
So, that was the first round of outreach that helped us frame the community survey and create the basis for the community meeting. And so, then we crafted, working with the Steering Committee and the city staff, we crafted a series of key questions about core values in Lebanon, and we asked them at the community meeting, and we got some great feedback, some clear patterns, some comments about the wording of the questions, discussed that with the Steering Committee, decided to proceed with the questions as initially written for consistency. And I'd like to share with you now the results of that survey. And as Beth mentioned, we had 40 additional surveys came in in the last two days right before closing, which is great action by Gary and others promoting that. So, those haven't been, those aren't represented in these slides, because we couldn't figure out how to get them into the graph in the minutes we have. We also got several paper surveys while we've been here, and we have these Spanish-language surveys coming to us, so we will make and add to this data and give you an additional report going forward.
We did get the, the only one we didn't get into is the last one, but the survey results you're about to see are all of the surveys as of this morning.
Oh, all right.
That's 200, 360.
Okay, good. So, this is complete, and we're not aware of anything that's coming in that's going to change the patterns you're about to see. So, these are questions that were crafted based on that initial outreach, and we're going to make a proposal to you shortly for some statements that are core values, which aren't the same statements as these. So, this isn't a vote on these statements, but it is the community's reaction to these things that were phrased going in. So, the first focus area that we asked people questions about was about jobs and growth, and there were three questions, one about new businesses, one about managed growth, and one about mobility. When we asked people if Lebanon should make it easy for new businesses and industry to bring economic opportunities to the community, they overwhelmingly said that they strongly agreed. So, let me describe what you're looking at here. In each case, there are five bars in these answers, and the bar clear on the left that's kind of a bluish-purple is people that said strongly agree. The bar that's furthest on the right that's dark, you can see on the right-hand set there, is strongly disagree, and then the ones in the middle are proportionately in between. And the number of people that said that are above each bar. What you should look at here is the shape of this sort of set of data. Don't worry too much about the score on each one, but you can see under new business, should Lebanon make it easy for new business and industry to bring economic opportunities to the community? Almost everybody said strongly agree or agree. So, there's a real strong response there. Similarly, on managed growth, when the question is Lebanon should welcome growth and development that aligns with the community's infrastructure, services, and resources, again, a very strong response that strongly agree or agree with that statement. Both of those use the word should, so there's an aspirational kind of, this is what we should do. On mobility, the question was worded slightly differently. Lebanon's transportation infrastructure supports the community's future needs, so it's more about how is it now? And you can see that the response was fairly ambivalent there. You know, the number, the top answers were either neutral or disagree slightly. So, that one's actually toward, a little bit toward the negative side, so people don't feel so good about the transportation infrastructure at the moment. The second category was about downtown. We asked three questions there about the heart of the community, a gathering center, and historic preservation. The first question, Lebanon's downtown should be the cultural and civic heart of the community. Overwhelming support for that one. The gathering center, Lebanon's downtown is an important social gathering center. Cafes, entertainment, civic, and artistic venues should be encouraged. Again, very strong support for that one. And historic preservation, Lebanon's downtown buildings should be restored and preserved. Wow, really strong support for that one. So, across the board, a sense of downtown should be a priority and is a core value in Lebanon. Moving forward to education, three questions there about schools, children and families, and lifelong learning. The schools one is a current situation. Lebanon's educational resources, K-12, colleges, vocational schools, meet the city's resident, needs of the city's residents. Kind of an ambivalent response there, kind of all over the place with different sense of where that should be. On children's and families, Lebanon should support its children with active after-school and extracurricular programs beyond the school system. Very strong support for that with almost everybody in the strongly agree or agree category. And lifelong learning, Lebanon should actively promote lifelong learning, opportunities for adults as well as children, really just about everybody on board with, if that one, virtually everybody on board with that one, very strong support. Health and safe, health and safe community. Healthy lifestyles, Lebanon should provide tools and resources for healthy lifestyles. Very strong support. Public safety and more current state, Lebanon residents feel a sense of safety and well-being due to limited crime. Not so much, kind of all over the place on that one, you know. The most common response was agree, but more than half said either neutral or disagree or strongly disagree. Recreation, Lebanon's parks, trails, open spaces, and other recreational activities support the community's future needs. Feel pretty good about it, but a lot of folks think there's room for improvement there. And then, seniors, Lebanon's senior services meet the needs of senior residents. This was one question where, if I had to do the whole thing over again, I might have asked people their age on this survey, because we got a lot of pushback in the community meeting about, well, thankfully, I'm not qualified to answer that question, because I don't know about the senior services. So, there were quite a few people that said they just, they didn't know, but we, and that was what happened in the community meeting, and then it bore out, the shape of this curve is just about like it was at the community meeting with lots of neutral, which tells me there was some uncertainty on that one. Small-town values, friendly. Lebanon welcomes new residents and provides opportunities for involvement. Pretty solid support there, but not just solid in the strongly agree and agree category, some uncertainty about how welcoming it is. Connections, Lebanon community events and activities promote connections among residents. Pretty good on that one. Again, not just overwhelming at the top end, but pretty good. And inclusive, Lebanon's outreach efforts effectively embrace and involve all segments of the community. Kind of ambivalent on that one. The number-one response is neutral, as many negative or disagree as agree. Arts and culture, events, Lebanon should support a thriving diversity of arts events and locales for locals and visitors. Very strong support for that one, almost no disagreement. The arts, Lebanon's opportunities in the arts, visual, literature, performing, music, support and enrich the lives of residents. Pretty strong support there too, but some more disagreement. And then, the library, which came, got on the list through the open-ended questions. Lebanon's public library adequately addresses the needs of the community. So, does it address it now? Pretty strong support. We heard a fair amount of feedback from folks at the community meeting and since that, since this wasn't a should question, people were frustrated. They were trying to hit the button that said, I'm all for the library, and we didn't exactly ask the question that way. We said, you know, how's it doing now? And they wanted to say, well, it's good, but it could be better. So, we heard that at the community meeting, and we've kept hearing it since. So, it's clear there are a lot of folks that really wanted to pull the lever for, make the library a priority. And then, we also forced people at the community meeting and in the online survey to compare these focus areas to each other. And this is another place where, don't get too hung up about the numbers on that slide, but kind of look at the shape of the, how all the lines go together. In this case, we asked people to rank their first priority, and then their second priority, and their third priority, all the way down to their sixth priority. And so, the number of times that they, for each of these categories that they said, the first priority, that's the dark blue on the left, and the last priority, the sixth priority, is the magenta on the right. So, a graph that was all the way on the left would be really strong priority. A graph that was all the way on the right would be a really low priority. This is not a scientific sample, and it's a few hundred, so there's lots of margin for error. So, if you kind of squint at it and look at the shape of those, you'll see that health and safety and education have pretty similar shapes there, and community and economic development. Really, the three on the left have very similar responses to each other. So, health and safety, education, and community and economic development kind of came out at the top of the heap. Downtown and community friendliness also have pretty similar shapes to how those work. So, it's kind of a second tier, and then arts and culture not identified as higher priority as the other things. This is not a vote about what you should do, this is more about where do people put key values? And the way I would interpret this, this is kind of a lot like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, like, you know, you must have health and safety, education, and community and economic development. Those are really the core services needed in the community. People are really striving for downtown and community friendliness as things that are important to Lebanon after they have their basic needs met. And if we really get it all right, arts and culture is something we really want in our community to make it happen. That's how I would interpret that in terms of allocating resources and making priorities. So, as a result of that, we, that was feedback on the draft that we crafted with the vision sounding board and the Steering Committee, and put out there in front of the community for the last month, and got hundreds of people to respond to that. And so, what we're doing right now is making some adjustments to that. So, the consulting team took a look at those results and made some suggestions about how we might make adjustments to the focus areas and to the core values as presented. We then discussed that with Gary and other city staff, and they made some modifications to that. And then, we put those suggestions up in front of the vision sounding board last night, and we made some further adjustments. So, we're going to roll out sort of suggestion about how this might look at the finish line, and then the purpose of this meeting today is to get your input. Beth, do you want to talk about the adjustments to the focus areas?
Sure. So, is this working? Oh, yeah. Jobs and growth was community and economic development. We decided that the heart of community and economic development in the research, in our experience in Lebanon was about jobs and growth and industry. Downtown remained the same, education remained the same. We had health and safety together, but once we picked it apart, we realized you really have to prioritize safety and healthy separately. And then, we've been talking a lot about this connected feeling that people have in Lebanon, so we were calling that connectedness, and then community friendliness, and then we really, once we started talking to Debbie and Gary and Linda and Lily, we said, those are small-town values. Like, what is, when people say they want a small town, what is that value? And so, that's what we tried to capture that, is being welcoming, making connections and inclusivity, and then arts and culture stayed the same.
And we made a few adjustments to the headlines then for the core values. So, under jobs and growth, we have industry and business, managed growth and infrastructure. Under downtown, we have heart of the community and historic preservation. Under education, lifelong learning, families and kids, and schools. Under safe community, drug-free, and safe neighborhoods. Under healthy community, active lifestyles, and healthcare. Under small-town values, welcoming, connections, and inclusivity. And under arts and culture, events, arts, and the library. So, then we started working on some draft statements to make that go forward, and for assistance with this, we consulted this group we called the Vision Sounding Board. We asked them to come together twice for us. The second time was last night, to help the Lebanon 2040 Steering Committee and consultants solicit and interpret community input by bringing broad community perspective to focus areas, core values, and a community vision statement for Lebanon as it looks ahead for the next 25 years. We had representatives of business, education, parents, young professionals, recreation, safety, the city, medical and hospital, ministry, seniors, infrastructure, and media. Listed names there of folks that were there, and I think all these folks participated in one or the other of those meetings, and quite a few of them, in both of them, was real active participation. The way they got picked to be on that group is they showed up at one of the events in the first part of this process and really said some interesting stuff and got engaged, and so Beth recruited them to be part of this kind of feedback loop. So, they don't have any authority, the authority's with the City Council, but these were some sort of well-meaning folks who volunteered some time to give some input to this process. And then, last night, they looked at the same list that you just looked at, and they kicked it around and made some suggestions, and this was the product of what they were doing last night, and what I'm about to present for the first time anywhere, is the suggested new edition of a community vision statement and set of core value statements for Lebanon looking ahead to 2040. And as we, as we move into that, I want to just touch on a couple of thoughts. These statements reflect more than 100, and there's this little handout that we put out on the table that pretty much everything we're about to say is on this handout if you want to read ahead or look back, or if you can't read the screen up there. This represents the 1,100 touches of Lebanon community members, including targeted outreach, one-on-one interviews, focus groups, community conversations, two online surveys, the Business Expo, a large community meeting. And these were all kicked around by the Vision Sounding Board last night. And they put together, with help from the city staff, this suggested vision statement for the community. Lebanon is a friendly and thriving community. There was also lively discussion, two or three places on this handout we gave you. There's a little red type that is stuff from the conversation last night that there kind of were mixed feelings in the group, and I thought I would just report their mixed feelings. So, as we were talking about this overarching statement, they said Lebanon is a friendly and thriving community, but there were voices that thought there should be something in there about growing or evolving, or something that showed a community that is changing. So, there were those thoughts. I'm going to kind of walk through this whole thing, and then we're going to have a chance to go through and discuss it, but I want you to see the whole thing before we start reacting to it. Jason, did you have a question, or did you want to, or you're just playing with your pencil? So, moving into the draft core values, and again, two caveats here. In every case, when we say Lebanon, the intention is that that means the community of Lebanon and its city government. So, we mean both the community beyond the municipal corporation, and we mean the municipal corporations, or meaning both those things. We may have some work, all of us, to do to figure out how you want to say that in whatever ends up in a poster, hopefully on the wall in here, but essentially, when we say Lebanon, that's what we mean, both the city and the community. And then, also, we need to be consistent in the way we phrase this, and it wasn't in the draft we had yesterday, and maybe it's a little better today, but we need to be consistent about whether we're making statements that are future vision statements, that is, in the future Lebanon will be, or whether they're aspirational statements, we are striving to be. So, in the case of everything that's presented here, you could say, in 2040, comma, before every one of these statements that's coming. Essentially, they're tried to be phrased as a future vision, so 25 years from now, Lebanon would be this. So, that's the intention of how it's written, and you may want to adjust that, but last night, the group observed sometimes we said we strive for, and sometimes we said in 2040 it will be, and we should pick one of those things that were, say, a way of phrasing. So, I'm going to wade right into it. Here's the whole thing together on this slide, and I'm going to read through it, and then we're going to, and then I'm just going to take it one statement at a time and ask you for your feedback, and Beth's going to take notes up there on the wall graphic and see if we can shape this. So, we got the vision statement of Lebanon is a friendly and thriving community, and then jobs and growth with industry and business, managed growth and infrastructure. Lebanon encourages and supports a variety of new and exciting businesses that provide local jobs and living wages. Managed growth, Lebanon welcomes growth that reinforces its plans for the future. And infrastructure, Lebanon sustains an infrastructure system, transportation, telecommunications, water, sewer, et cetera, that supports future growth plans. The second focus area is jobs and growth. What did I, what did?
I'm just going to read them.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Oh, the second focus area then is, oh, they're different order on the handout than they are on the slide. Oh, so let me then back up a second. So, on the slide, we presented across the top, the three that came up kind of scoring at the highest, jobs and growth, safe community, and education as maybe the sort of headlines, and then supported by downtown, a healthy community, small-town values, arts and culture. But for, since everybody's looking at the handout in front of you, why don't I read through them in the same order they are on the handout, so I don't drive you nuts? So, downtown had, originally, we had three statements there, but we narrowed it to two, because we thought it was easier to understand. Heart of the community and historic preservation. Downtown is the recognized center of Lebanon where people gather to celebrate and connect. And historic preservation, Lebanon preserves its rich past through renovation and preservation of its historic downtown buildings. The third focus area is education with three statements on core values, on lifelong learning, family and kids, and schools. Lebanon engages community members in lifelong Lebanon engages community members in lifelong learning to support self-sufficiency and fulfillment. Families and kids, Lebanon supports a range of positive activities through and beyond its schools to enrich the lives of families. This is one where we had a lively discussion last evening about exactly how to, the role of the word "schools" in this statement, because the group specifically meant, we mean both through the schools and beyond the schools. And in an earlier edition, it looked like we sort of meant after-school programs, and we did, but we meant more than that. So that's how they've suggested to state it now. And then schools specifically, a broad spectrum of educational opportunities is available to the community. Next area is safe community with two statements there, drug-free and safe neighborhoods. Drug-free, comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive to make Lebanon drug-free. Lively discussion about that one last night with folks saying, well, it's never going to be drug-free, that's not realistic, but then also folks saying, but that's what the goal is, that's what we're striving for. So that's, the proposal in front of you would be to state it that way as an aspiration that we know it'll never be actually there. Safe neighborhoods, proactive law enforcement and community intervention keep Lebanon safe. Next area is healthy community with two core values, active lifestyles and healthcare. Recreation opportunities enable healthy and active lifestyles, and comprehensive health and wellness services support community vitality. Next focus area is small-town values with three core values of welcoming, connections and inclusivity. Lebanon actively welcomes new community members. Connections, friendliness is the key element of Lebanon's social makeup. And inclusivity, Lebanon embraces all community members and is compassionate toward the needs of the people. And the final focus area is arts and culture with three core values around events, arts, and library. Events, Lebanon supports community events that connect residents to each other and welcome people to the community. Arts, Lebanon nurtures creativity across all forms of art. And the library, Lebanon values its outstanding library and the opportunity it provides for enriching the community. So the proposal here from the Vision Sounding Board and the process to date is that this collection of stuff on the slide up there would be the vision for Lebanon 2040 with a community vision statement and seven focus areas and however many core value statements that is here. What I suggest we do with the next time we have together is just walk through these statements one by one and discuss them. We'd love to hear your feedback, if there should be adjustments, if you're happy with them, just anything, this is your direction to us about what ought to happen in sort of evolving this to a product you feel good about at the end. So the first focus area there is jobs and growth, and we had the three, oh, you bet.
Yeah, just a general question. You made a statement a few moments ago that when you use the term "community," you meant the citizenry as well as the government. Did you get an impression from the various touches, the myriad of touches, that the community actually feels that the government is in fact, the city government and its influence is in fact partnering with the community, leading, pushing, being drug? How do you?
Well, first of all, we didn't ask any question at all like that, and it was pretty clear that our client was the city government. So I would couch anything I said with, we didn't ask the question, and we, our purpose wasn't to evaluate the city, and we didn't ask people that question. My general impression with many communities is that, you know, residents in general don't really have much of a sense of when it's the city government, and when it's the school district, and when it's the county, and, you know, when it's those idiots in Washington, DC, you know, it's just like the government, or whatever it is. At least, and I want to ask Beth to kind of weigh in on this, in terms of my interactions with people, my sense of people's feelings about the city of Lebanon were pretty good, you know, as good as anywhere else that I've worked.
I would say yes, they were all fairly, very positive about the city. Things like water obviously came up, and things that they think the city is either, you know, where they can see a direct connection to the city raising rates and things like that. I'm super happy with this administration, I can say that's pretty overall. Even there's some open-ended, we left, you could write freely at the last question of the survey, and I can, I should, I'll share the final, final ones with you guys. And there's something about that, like, some are gay, good government, we're happy, but other things are about, you know, they need to work harder to fix some things. So definitely a mechanical role for the city. I will say last night, that comment was about, a lot of the statements say, like, you know, the second one or the first one, Lebanon encourages and supports. The person who said it wanted to make sure that everybody understood it wasn't the community and the city separately, and it wasn't just the city's responsibility, that when we're reading these, it's everybody together in the community. That was the clarification that he wanted to make about that.
And I would say that the individual that led to the discussion about the community and the city government was trying to make sure the city government knew that it couldn't get off the hook on this. It was, the city was supposed to deliver. I mean, that was what the agenda was behind that comment, which I thought was fair enough.
I want to make a comment around the first statement was on the meeting. The community of Lebanon and its city government. A little bit of hope that people with those leadership in there, because there is scope of leadership throughout the community of the city government. And having encompass leaders at social clubs, service clubs, community.
Business.
A lot of the leader in the area.
Churches, yes.
You've got a good point.
So we want to talk about Lebanon, the community and its leaders, or the, something like, something, the city government. Okay. Fair enough. So any other sort of broad comments before we start wading through the individual comments together? Let me go back to the overall, just, you know, anybody want to react to the overall structure before we talk about the individual statements or any other kind of top-level questions like those?
I think that you broke up the healthy community and the safety community piece, and that was kind of specific. I'm happy to stand down with the categories. Thank you.
We heard you.
No, I'm really pleased with the group, it really is. I think those that contribute to that are right on, and it encompasses our vision, I believe.
I like the presentation of the first and second tier. I think that gives us some phasing priorities.
I like the whole structure, I like all the categories. The only one I had a question on is the safe community, drug-free, and you mentioned that about making Lebanon drug-free, you know, drug-free will never happen, but it's a goal. But shouldn't we be making goals that are attainable? And that's a hard goal to reach if we can't, and to me, to make that goal and not be able to reach that kind of, it's almost like the wording on that needs to be a little bit different. You know, I'd love to see our city crime-free, but that isn't going to happen either until we put every single person in the city in jail. I mean, it's just, I don't see that happening. And the same thing with drug-free, I don't, as much as I want to, I don't see that happening. So I don't know how to get around that, if anybody has any other ideas or thoughts.
So, great point. I guess, I'm inclined to make you walk through and talk about every statement one by one, because I think they're all important, so.
Just, I might just address that, because we do the same thing in schools, right? We want every kid to graduate, so, but they all don't, right? So what we do is we distinguish between a priority and a goal. So the priority is to be drug-free, right? That's what we strive for. The goal could be, it's a measurable goal on the percent of, you know, what, you know, crimes that happen around drugs, or whatever. There's ways you can measure progress towards that priority. So if priorities never change, the goals do.
The goals do.
Yeah. So, I'm going to play the role of facilitator here and drag you through it. You could, one of your choices is just say, "Yeah, it's fine, move on, Brian." We'll see if that's what you do. So I want to, let's start with jobs and growth. Industry and business, Lebanon encourages and supports a variety of new and existing businesses that provide local jobs and living wages.
I like it.
I agree.
Everybody comfortable with, there were several edits to that last night, they worked hard on it, but it felt pretty good at the end.
Mm-hmm.
I've heard good comfort with that one. Managed growth, Lebanon welcomes growth that reinforces its plans for the future.
I like that.
Not everybody, not every community would say that, but it feels like that's what Lebanon has said during this process.
What are our plans?
That's a good question.
Our two.
Is there some next?
I think what we meant, and Gary, feel free to pipe up if you want, I think what we meant was not just any growth whatsoever, but we have a comprehensive plan and an urban growth plan, and so we're welcoming growth that fits in with those plans, is what I think we meant.
That's exactly right. All of the structure of our planning is envisioned as part of that statement, that if it fits in with those plans, which are also community-based, then we're all for it.
We wouldn't say, for instance, we support all growth.
No.
I just don't like the word.
There are certain things that you couldn't do in Lebanon because our planning documents don't support them.
And you certainly could produce another version of this, that it has explanation of all these things, and that might be something you choose to do, but I think we're trying to keep it up so that theoretically, you can put the whole thing up on one page, which means there's some limit to how many words can be in each statement, so that.
The word reinforces, just, I don't like that.
Okay.
I think something along the lines of aligns, or something else that shows congruency, maybe, some other adjective for that, or some other verb for that, because it, I just don't like that.
I agree. Aligns feel better, aligns with its plans for the future?
Off the top of my head, yeah, but.
Yeah.
I like that. Maybe the old Thesaurus app.
Supports.
Supports is good, too.
Yeah.
Why are you anti-reinforce?
I just am. I just am.
Okay, so I heard, I'm going to try and keep us out of, unless it's real clear, agonizing over exact words. I hear a different word than reinforce, and aligns and supports are two candidates for that. Is that, everybody comfortable with that direction to the consultants and the staff to?
Let's support that.
It just tore us out. Fight.
Yep, well, that will happen. I see pretty much comfort there. Infrastructure, this one has been mobility sometimes as we talked about this, and the Sounding Board last night felt strongly that that was too narrow. I would say from our process, the thing people brought up was transportation, but I thought they were logical in saying it. All the infrastructure, the internet, you know, needs to work, too. So this, our suggestion is Lebanon sustains an infrastructure system that supports future growth plans, and I added, because I was trying to be clear, transportation, telecommunications, water and sewer, and et cetera. My guess is sometimes you'll use it with that perend in there, and sometimes without, but.
Well, if you list water, you've added the detail of water and sewer, you should put power in there. The danger of list making a list like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Power is important, too, because a lot of places we can't have because we don't have the power structure for it. So I would leave water and sewer out, but I thought their point last night was really well-taken about the telecommunications, because that's important, and I had never thought about that as mobility, but Carrie made a very good point for it with the telecommunications that makes us mobile. So my comment is if you're going to have the list, include power.
All right.
Makes sense.
Yep. Okay, ready to move on from jobs and growth? So safe community, this gets us back to Paul's point, and I think this is worth kicking around, I want to make sure we're comfortable with it. So this, and this was, there was lively debate about this last night, so I make that sure that, so then, where they ended up was drug-free, and for a while it was not drug, you know, we had some humor about, you know, mostly drug-free, a few drugs, but drug-free was the aspiration, and again, that never be attained. So comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive to make Lebanon drug-free. And I guess I want to just open it up to the comments that Paul and Rob made about, you know, you won't ever be drug-free, it might be the aspiration, you're working toward it, your strategic plan might have benchmarks that you're trying to attain, but this is your plan, what do you want to do?
I don't think it says we will be drug-free, it says we're striving, so that you hold your future plans against that. Does it, does it help us with that strive to become less druggie? I don't know. I don't have, I don't have.
Drug-free to me, all I can see is Nancy Reagan and just say no, and it just takes me back to the 80s. I just don't like that. Sorry, I sound like I'm really being nitpicky here, but if it was something that maybe involved law enforcement, too, that our law enforcement strives to, you know, keep illegal drugs or illegal narcotics or whatever out of Lebanon, drug-free is just, we're not going to be drug-free. Prescription medications or drugs, and I don't like the verbiage of it.
Other thoughts?
I'm almost thinking of reducing illegal drug use, or something like that. I don't know, but you're right, the drug-free, people have prescription drugs.
Or reduce the use and negative impact of illegal drugs, or whatever, something.
So how do we attach a goal to that, to show progress?
Well, that would be in our vision.
Yeah, that would come back as a strategic plan. We don't know the answer to that yet.
Safety was a part of health, right? In the, so if it was six, they got broken to seven. And I'm wondering how much of this notion, like, there's a lot of bad stuff around safety that comes from drugs. So it's a big deal in our community. So when I think of drug-free, I think of, you know, helping people get healthy lives, you know, helping people interact together. I don't think of Nancy Reagan, it's on, you can have that conversation, you deal with this all the time. And it's, I think it's a powerful state that I'd like to see, but.
Rob, you're saying in terms of treatment programs, programs to help?
Education, treatment, or jobs. When people have jobs, they don't do drugs, and, you know, their lives are more put together. So we've got a lot of, there's a lot of crack houses, you know, there's doctors around here.
I hear, the question I hear, I don't hear anybody pushing back on comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive. There seems to be, everybody seems to like that. And then the question is, are we, what, how do we say what we're striving for, and probably even more problematic, what's the headline in bold type?
How about something more like, to eliminate illegal drug use in Lebanon, as opposed to make Lebanon drug-free, something that's more in the?
Is that, that might do it.
But that, so you're still, you're not, you haven't achieved your goal until you've eliminated, or essentially become drug-free.
But we're striving to do that, it doesn't say we have to do that, it just say we're striving to do that.
That's my point, even with the drug-free, it's, you're striving to be drug-free, or you're striving to eliminate drugs, that's semantics. It's the same thing, I'm cool with striving.
Strive on.
Strive on, man.
Well, yeah, years ago, I taught a workshop in the community to educate parents, it was called Preparing for the Drug-Free Years, it was back in the 80s. I hated the title, but I liked what it said, but it was basically talking about the real inroads in that, making families have, create an atmosphere of dialogue with their kids, especially pre-teen, et cetera, and there was a number of steps that happened there so that, plus that most parents would say, "All my kid knows." that, plus that most parents would say, oh, my kid knows, and you ask a really tough question, most parents couldn't answer it, because they, they thought they knew or they implied it, but they'd never really talked about the specifics of drug interaction with kids, et cetera. So it's kind of a complicated subject, but, once again, I didn't like the way it was worded, but it was a great program. So, you know, maybe you could almost put it under community drug awareness, because I think with awareness becomes enlightenment, and then the choices, better choices are made.
Yeah. If the headline was drug awareness and the statement was comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive to eliminate illegal drugs?
Or reduce illegal drug use.
Reduce, reduce illegal drug use.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that.
And you'll decide all illegal.
Yeah, I could, I could.
You can even change it to a positive, as in like strive to increase healthy outcomes or increase.
I like that as a kicker, too.
Just really what we're talking about. I mean, we're going to be, Thursday, Thursday night in school, we're going to be looking at student drug use policy and doing drug tests on our kids, you know, just, you know, we're thinking with the new, the new law coming, we may have half of our kids doing drugs of some kind or other. That's just, you know, experimental, et cetera, et cetera, but we know that it's not good for them, even though maybe legal for adults. So there's, there's this notion of teaching people, this stuff is important.
So I heard, I, I felt good comfort with drug awareness as a headline, and comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive, and I guess the question would be to reduce illegal drug use or to produce a healthier community. I guess those were two different, one was positive and one was to reduce a negative and a.
The one thing that I hear from, from people all over the community that say the same thing over and over is that they're tired of the illegal drugs in town. That's what I hear, not that I hope they get a healthy lifestyle. It's, and I don't mean that that's not important, but it, but it, from the community standpoint, people are saying, I just wish the drugs would go away.
Speaking for the process, that certainly came out in this process, we didn't ask a question about drugs and it came up all the time. So for a working draft, can we accept drug awareness and comprehensive education, prevention and treatment programs strive to reduce illegal drug use?
I like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got a couple of weeks to think about it, and if you want to tweak, you can, but let's keep moving.
Could you choose a different word besides tweak?
Yeah.
Thank you, Shelley.
You've got a good point. Obviously Shelley has some experience.
Safe neighborhoods, proactive law enforcement and community intervention, keep Lebanon safe.
No more huffing over your.
Lull them into sleep. We're going to say that one's good.
Yep.
Education, three here on lifelong learning, family and kids in schools. Lifelong learning. Lebanon engages community members in lifelong learning to support self-sufficiency and fulfillment.
Yes.
Okay.
I feel good about that, there was a lot of debate last night.
Is there a benefit from engages and promotes? Because, I mean, we can talk about it, but if we, I mean, we want to go one step further in.
But engaging is an active word. I mean, that's not just saying it, that's actually trying to do something about it, I would think.
It's more assertive than just makes lifelong learning available. It says we go out and engage people in it, so.
I like it.
I do, too.
I'm hearing people are pretty comfortable. Families and kids. Lebanon supports a range of positive activities through and beyond its schools to enrich the lives of families.
Like it.
Mm-hmm.
We're kind of speaking for the schools here a little bit, but I'm assuming they're reaping the benefit of all this input and.
I was thinking the same thing, too, but I, if you read it the way, you know, they, they made that disclaimer at the beginning where it's the community of Lebanon and also the city leaders, government, whatever, if you read it as the community of Lebanon, you know, supports a range of, yes, we do. It's not, this is not a city responsibility, and I was having that same hang-up earlier in at the, at the one group session, that, that's not our job, that's not the city's job, but it's, it's more of a global thing here, and I, it does fit if you think of it that way.
I think Wayne had it right in trying to redefine what Lebanon means. I said at the beginning of this process that there may be areas of the vision for focus that weren't the responsibility of city government, but some other entity in the community. So I think it's important, the definition is very important, that maybe it's the leaders and not just the city. There are leaders in the city government, but there are so many other community leaders, and when we get to assigning, you know, who does what, we don't want to get hung up on that this is something the city government's supposed to be doing.
Yeah. I guess where I was coming from is not so much that I, because this is an area where the schools will lead, but we'll enhance, and I get that, but it'd be kind of neat in a way to see if, if the schools would like to say, yeah, we, it's not just the council's job, but the schools would sort of mirror that and say, yes, we, we support this concept and so on, just even if it's symbolic, you know what I mean? Because they are, they are definitely the leaders in, in this.
Well, they are, but we also do things like the senior center with the education and different programs they have there, and we've got LBCC that has a continuing education. So there's more than just the school district.
Cop Northwest.
Yeah, Cop Northwest.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bureau of Scouts, all those leaders that are promoting that, I think, were a team and not the city of, the city government or the city council supporting those things. The leaders of the community are doing that.
I would also make an example from another community that I did a process like this in, that where a very similar statement was in debate, and it was a place where the schools were in crisis, and it was a big problem. And, you know, there were voices that said the city should take over the school district and, you know, fix, you know, and, and I remember the city manager there saying, you know, I can't do that, I can't fix the schools, but with the resources of the city, I could help fund an after-school program that would augment what the school is doing. That would be within the resources of something the city government could do. And so that was, the community really talked about that, is there places where the city could help, you know, the school district without actually getting in the school district's business? So I, you know, I'm not making any recommendation here about what you might do, but in, in terms of stating that, you know, we think that a range of positive activities through and beyond the schools is important, that gives you rationale for thinking about a future decision you might make about something, or that you might encourage the Boys and Girls Club to do something.
Good.
So then, the schools getting further into somebody else's business. A broad spectrum of educational opportunities is available to the community.
Yeah, yep.
An earlier version last night that said all forms of education are available in the community or something like that, and there were several people said, well, that's just, that's never going to be true, but what we're trying to say is we really do want a spectrum, you know, of things available to the community. So this felt pretty good to me, I was pretty happy with this edit last night. Looks like everybody likes it.
They do have that.
Yeah, and it will be, and you could see us in, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, having one of the broadest spectrums of educational opportunities on the planet, you know? It's really going to.
You're definitely a leader in that area.
That's how many is now, I do build programs, is that people want options and choices and, you know, you can't just do math and reading, or we need to like figure out ways to do art and music, because the funding is harder for that stuff.
I guess if I might ask a question about how the, the groups are your input, or was there any dialogue around the adult component of adult education and their opportunities? Because I'm not sure that we're meeting all that.
Was that a question?
Yeah, does that fit?
I think the lifelong learning note up there really says that that's an important thing is to, to have that.
And LBCC and the senior center, they both offer those. So we do have that option in that partnership in Lebanon, to have that element for the older people to have become lifelong learners.
Churches.
And the churches, too, yeah.
I think that covers it.
Let's keep going. So downtown, this was, this is, we didn't ask a question at the beginning about downtown, it really came out of the open-ended input, and then we teed up three questions about it. As we got, working with the city staff, getting ready for this phase of the process, we realized we're having trouble telling the difference between two of those statements, so we combined them. But there's one here about heart of the community and one about historic preservation. First one, downtown is the recognized center. Now, this is again, this is a place where it's important to say, in 2040, Lebanon, downtown is the recognized center of Lebanon, where people gather, celebrate and connect.
I like it. Yeah, it's good.
And then on the historic buildings, in 2040, Lebanon preserves its rich past through renovation and preservation of its historic downtown buildings.
Very good.
Yes.
These are like goals or statements or, these aren't facts.
I, I would say these are core values or visions, they are aspirations for where Lebanon would be in 2040.
In the, in the context of a community vision, we would hope that in 2040, those are facts.
Yeah. Because right now Walmart is where people gather to.
Oh, Rob, come on.
Come on.
It all goes down.
I think, I think that is the point, is what you're doing in this, this is not the strategic plan, this is, this is where you're trying to say, this is where we want to be.
Yes.
And then the strategic plan is how do we get there?
Absolutely.
Yep.
We've got, for that to happen, we've got to do a lot in 15.
And that's why, from the beginning, we've been talking about there needs to be a strategic plan that comes after this. And so that's probably where, it's going to be, it's going to be more specific and more focused than this whole exercise has been, because then we'll, we'll be able to look at specific projects and efforts that we want to take to bring this about.
And there was really a lot of discussion in the way you talked about just now, that, you know, they, they want it, but they doubt it, that in all honesty, two things. Number one, the people have spoken in this visioning, so you, as a city council, have got an opportunity to make it a goal. We've never made it a goal before because we really weren't directed by any, we talked about, yeah, it'd be nice. This is a specific goal, and I believe this, I know this is possible. I was kidding Brian about being involved with the Main Street program, he's seen it. There are rural communities that have changed. This is not that hard to imagine for me. It can happen, and so we just need to believe, because I know this can happen with this process. It's not that crazy of a, of a goal. There's one in here that's I think is crazy, but I haven't got to that yet.
So Barry, then the historic component of that downtown, because we have recognized already what those historic buildings are. There are not very many of them downtown that meet the criteria of historic.
Well, historic to the community of Lebanon, maybe not necessarily by the definition of.
I'm not sure that when people were talking about historic buildings, if they had a defined list in mind. I think they were thinking about the historic downtown.
The history of downtown.
As, as a whole. That, you're right, there are some buildings that have been emasculated from their prior glory, never, never to be again, but could there be some renovation that made them attractive and, and more useful? Yeah, yeah, there are. I think that's really.
Always got a good example of some buildings like that, where they've taken buildings that are.
Right.
That were kind of run down and they really didn't look like the way they used to, and then they've made them look old again.
For the, the few buildings that are truly historic, we would want to pursue preservation and restoration of those kind of facilities.
So stepping out of my facilitator role and just using a little bit of my personal expertise and experience, that statement is loaded with words that have definitions, and I knew that when I was writing it, but I'm, I tried to be squishy enough about it that we didn't get hung up on that, because I can, I could get you a bunch of people that could come in here and tell you a lot about the word historic and the word preservation and the word renovate and the word rehabilitate, and I figured the folks that were participating in this process, what they really mean is we want the downtown to work and we want those old buildings fixed up. You know, I really think that's what people are trying to say, and they're not thinking about whether they're on the National Register of Historic Places or whether they've had a, a, a historic restoration that meets the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation, restoration of historic buildings. You know, that's not, you know, they're not thinking about that, they just want to fix up those nice old buildings and make downtown work. That's really what they're trying to say. I was trying to write a statement that everybody would kind of get that that's what it meant.
That's good.
So if downtown is already the heart of the community, which is what the people said, right?
Or should be, that's what, that's the goal.
Did they agree with the statement that it is already the recognized center, though, or is it the goal that it should be the center?
Deliberately, I said in 2040, when I read this one, because that's where people get stuck.
Right.
Is, is, and it's one of the, in, in the, in the whole spectrum of stuff in this thing, it's one of the places where people get stuck, is they want it to be, but it isn't now, and they know it isn't, and so, you know, in your vision statement, you don't want to say, downtown stinks, but we wish it didn't, you know, you need to, you need to make, you need to make an aspirational, so I think this is a place where we might want to think, it's going to be important in the final sort of edit as how do we present this, because clearly what we mean here is our vision for Lebanon is that in 2040, downtown is the recognized center of Lebanon, where people gather to celebrate and connect. That's what we mean, and maybe we're going to have to say all of those words right here, I don't know. Wayne, did you have something?
No, I'm just going to tell Rob we're moving away from Walmart.
Yeah, and that's the goal. I mean, do we want downtown to be that, or do we want Walmart to be that?
We want downtown.
Do we want downtown to be that?
Walmart's not that.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Doc's Diner, here we come.
Healthy community, two key attributes here, healthy lifestyles and health care. Active lifestyles, recreation opportunities enable healthy and active lifestyles.
One question on that, because I thought that during the process, at least people I've talked to that were in the process and answered questions, that things like community gardens and, and having the, the market and healthy choices was kind of another part of the healthy community part. I don't see that unless I'm under healthy community.
Good point. Didn't think of that when we were drafting this. I was worried about the trails folks, who seem to be happy with this statement.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about, because, yeah, it's great, but not everybody goes on the trail.
Well.
You know, and not everybody goes riding their bike, but having healthy choices, having schools that have a garden and, and all those kinds of things are part of the healthy lifestyle.
So.
This is active lifestyle, I was thinking more of a healthy lifestyle, but.
Well, now put both in, they're active.
Healthy and active lifestyle, maybe.
And recreation opportunities.
The scripture has both.
Yeah.
So maybe rewrite this one to say healthy lifestyles and say recreation opportunities and, uh, healthy choi.
I think it's pretty simple. I think if you just say healthy choices before all the rest of that.
Yeah.
It gets what I think we're talking about.
Say, say the whole statement, I'm not.
More comprehensive. Well, it would be healthy choices and recreation opportunities enable healthy and active lifestyles.
All right, how does that, how does that work for everybody?
Like that.
And change the title to healthy lifestyles instead of active lifestyles?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Beth, make sure you get that, that's pretty specific, so we're going to get, healthy lifestyles.
Healthy lifestyles.
Healthy lifestyles and recreation opportunities.
Yeah.
Enable healthy and active lifestyles.
And change the title to healthy lifestyle?
Yes.
Title is healthy lifestyles and it's healthy choices.
I know, I was going to...
That's a bit much.
Healthy and health care.
It's a bit much, right?
Yeah, you already have healthy and active lifestyles. I don't know why we're having to squeeze healthy in there again. I guess I don't, you're saying that like three times.
They're trying to take active out and put something else back in.
I like active in there. I think BLT people, the trails people will like active in there. You need to have, be sure there's places to be active.
Yeah.
And there's a, you need to be sure you have a Saturday market that's got, you know, vegetable choices and, you know, so something that encompasses that. But I think you leave active.
I would argue that all of that can fall under the umbrella of activity, being active, whether you're going to the market, whether you're gardening, whether you're on the trail, you're, you're being active. I don't know that we need to say active is walking.
I don't agree with active being, because I, as far as myself, I'm not going to be active, but I would rather eat healthy. I may not be going out on trails and, and running around town, but as a healthy lifestyle, I want to eat healthy. So I, I don't know. I just, I don't think active is, I think active is, like you said, I think it's more of a trails, which I'm fine with, but I think it should be in combination with the, as long as we have choices, healthy choices, something like that, I think I'll be okay with it.
So what if, what if it were, the headline was healthy lifestyles?
Active lifestyles.
With what, Brian?
Healthy, active lifestyles.
Yeah.
No, Brian was mid-sentence. What were you going to say?
If you take Wayne and I together, what we said was healthy and active lifestyles, which was, is one of the few places we would have an and in the statement, but we could do that. And then the statement would be healthy choices and recreation opportunities enable healthy and active lifestyles. A little bit redundant, we might want to...
Well, you could actually do it with the healthy and active lifestyles as the title and then say recreation opportunities and choices. Or you don't really have to put the, and active lifestyles again.
You could get rid of healthy and active at the end there and put vital.
So, so...
Vital lifestyles.
Um, so healthy choices and recreation opportunities enable or support healthy citizens? Or am I using healthy?
Healthy community?
You just said a word, Gary, that I've, I now...
Vital.
Vital. Vital citizens? Healthy. Historic. Healthy choices and recreation opportunities encourage or enable or support vital...
Community.
Citizens or vital...
Community.
A vital community or vital residents.
The next one is vital community. Yeah.
Oh, good point.
Jason, whenever Rebecca points at you tonight, I want you to say that.
The citizens wasn't bad, vital citizens.
Drug free.
Oh, you got it. Give me a button.
You point it whenever you want that, you know, just say...
So...
So where are we at, Brian?
I think, I think we're at, that the title is healthy and active lifestyles. And the statement is healthy choices and recreation opportunities support...
Support.
Vital citizens. And maybe we need to look up a different word from vital just because it's in the next statement. It works fine, but... Or vital residents.
Opens the door for a park... I don't like vital citizens.
Why not just, I don't see why, what there's a problem of in, in the sentence of putting healthy choices, recreation opportunities enable and support healthy lifestyles. I don't see why, why that's a problem putting that in there again.
Okay.
All right, you took out active.
What's that?
You took out active, that makes more sense.
Okay.
So, uh...
Healthy.
Healthy and active lifestyles, healthy choices and recreation opportunities enable healthy lifestyles.
Yeah.
Good God, go with it.
Let's call it, go with that and people can have a couple of weeks to ruminate on it and see if somebody has it.
I can chew on some granola.
Segways, right?
What was it?
Our healthy lifestyles.
Just lifestyles.
That's too suggestive. Lifestyle choices.
Active and healthy is suggestive.
I think we should move on and recognize we're trying to capture two thoughts here and that's okay. And let's, let's...
We don't move on, I'm going to start flagging.
Out of, out of the gaze of the bright lights, the microphones in the crowded room.
Stick it out. This is why they're two categories.
Okay, let's move on.
That's it. So health care, comprehensive health and wellness services support community vitality.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Yay, everybody likes that one. Let's keep going. We got two more focus areas to go. We're, we're approaching the finish line here. Small town values, and this has had different titles as we've gone through it. And, you know, we're convinced, after working on this for six or eight months, that Lebanon really values small town values. I mean, that really is what everybody said. And so I think we should, I guess I'm recommending we use it and we embrace it with three parts to that, welcoming, connections, and inclusivity. Welcoming, Lebanon actively welcomes new community members.
Here, here.
I find that really important.
I like it.
You're not always welcome when you move to a community.
No.
And I feel like we are and I, and through whatever change we go through between now and then, I would have us not lose that as a core value.
When I moved here, I had the welcome lady come to my house. I'm not kidding. And remember the welcome lady?
Yeah, she came to my house.
And she, she came to my house and brought a little package of stuff. And we don't have that anymore, unfortunately. It's kind of faded away. But that kind of a thing, a lot of people that I spoke to really liked. And that's the kind of stuff that's neat about our community. Yeah, it was where she collected stuff from businesses.
It was her business.
It was a business.
Judy Farmer. She was the Lebanon greeter.
So let's, everybody, everybody's on board with that and let's keep going. Connections. Friendliness is the key element of Lebanon's social makeup.
Is that the one you think is...
I think social, you're making a face.
I find that sentence awkward, but the next one is one that worries me, so just...
Well, let's not go there yet.
I like the connections one.
Friendliness is a key element of Lebanon's social makeup.
It's honor, sorry.
People seem okay with that. The sounding board loved that one. I think Gary wrote it, but the sounding board loved it last night. Okay, this is Shelley's moment. Trains here with the, with the...
Shaking it up for you.
I love the vibration on the screen.
So inclusivity. Lebanon embraces all community members and is compassionate toward the needs of the people.
Of course, my concern is as your statistics show, that is not what's happening. And I know it's a goal, but is that an attainable goal? I don't even know how to go towards making, making that happen.
I think it is because I think like with this process that we're doing, we've reached out to people who we don't normally talk to. And I think that's what, that's what I felt when I gave a negative on this one, was that there's certain groups of people, whether they're African-American or Hispanic or whatever group it is, that aren't the majority, that we don't talk to a lot.
That's true.
And we don't hear from. And, and I think my goal is to see that that happens more in the community. And I think that's, that's what I got out of it.
And I agree with you. My challenge is how are you guys going to come up with a goal to meet that? You have to set the goals.
But that's in the process later.
I don't know what you guys think.
Might be you.
I think, I think we can borrow the pages from some of the church groups as they're looking at the homeless. I think you can borrow some of the pages from the urban leagues of various cities around the country as, as they deal with minority populations and how they interface with the police department and the schools and, you know, I mean...
Maybe there's an educational process.
There's a, there's a body of information out there to draw from.
I hope so.
I think it's a great statement, actually. I love that.
I think it's a great statement. I just worry that we can't do it and I'm, but you're right, there's education out there that can give us the tools to do that.
We've got a better chance of doing this than we do getting drug free.
In, in 2040, Lebanon embraces all community members and is compassionate toward the needs of the people.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if not, we'll shoot them. Oh, I did something.
The needs of those people?
Everybody's got line bars.
You know, you create a rubric, right? And you go on a scale of one to five, where are we right now? And, you know, you set a goal to move to the next level. And you have some markers in there that, that would help you move it, so that's...
Well, you've got his statistics. And his statistics on this category showed that it's, it's not...
We're not there, no.
No, we're not.
It's just like the downtown, you know, it's just like we're not there. So we're low on the scale, but...
People seem to agree with the value here.
Yep, yes. All right, I'll be quiet. Shelley's been overrode. Do we have one more?
She just had concerns.
It's really important and we need to work on it.
They know that you get talking about it. People know.
That's true. That is true. We do get them help. That's true.
It's one of the reasons why we, we have some of the problems we do because we, we help people.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. The last focus area is arts and culture with events, arts, and library. Lebanon supports community events that connect residents to each other and welcome people to the community.
How does that fit under arts and culture as opposed to small town values? It's all kind of small town values.
But now you're talking about Strawberry Festival. You know, you're talking about the guitars under the stars. You're talking about bringing those kinds of things to bring people from out of town. Yeah, so I, I like it.
Is that what we consider culture? Is that what...
Art and culture, the culture would be probably the art in the library. You don't like our strawberry shortcake?
I don't think we know what culture is. We don't have a common definition.
So that...
I think Rob's show must be inflammatory today. He's just...
I, I agree.
We have a culture here in Lebanon. It's just not very broad in scope.
It is a generic term to say...
It's a heading that you should know what we buy.
Well, but I think that's part of the diversity because it's, it's, you know, I mean, it could be dueling banjos or it could be the Philharmonic. I mean, it's, it's different things to different people and they get to define what that culture is. And a community provides those varied opportunities.
And it will, it will constantly change.
And it looks like something different for everybody.
Exactly.
It's attractive.
In 2040, maybe we ought to be having a Cinco de Mayo event and we should have a powwow for the Native Americans.
I think all of those, those events are driven from the people, though. I mean, there's a...
I want to shut down downtown for the day of my people.
And what are you going to have to drink?
Well, it's St. Patrick's Day. We're going to all, we're going to be Irish in our downtown.
Michelle was right, too, is that kind of stuff is driven usually by the community members that are interested in that. You know, if we as Anglos, you know, try and put together a Cinco de Mayo festival, it probably isn't going to be very good.
But we're talking about developing leaders and maybe we need to do a better job of facilitating leadership from minority communities and outlying...
Which goes to one of our other values.
Right.
Yeah.
Inclusive, so...
So at the moment, I just would observe that at the moment, you, you did just have one that talks about being inclusive.
Right.
And that's a statement there. You could certainly in the last section or in this section have a core value that was about diversity or multicultural or broadening. That, that would be nothing, that would be rational.
I think inclusivity really...
And you're sort of tickling at that, but it, I can't say it came out of the process. The process said we should be more inclusive. Maybe that's where you are right now is the step. I don't know. I'm just putting it out there. I mean, I sort of like this conversation and maybe the city council wants to say that, but that's what you'd be saying. You'd be saying we really want to broaden the culture, cultural dynamic, so...
I think we do. I'd like to move, I'd like to move the barometer that way, more than this does.
That's, that's a fair, I guess I'm, I'm putting it out there. Is that what you're suggesting? And if so, let's say it.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Rob, where were you going with that?
What? I was just trying to figure out what it means. Does it, does it mean you want to be sophisticated? Does it mean we want a variety of experiences? How does that fit with the...
I think the culture is how the people define it, how the community defines it. You know, it might not be the symphony. It might be guitars under the stars. It might be something else.
When we talk about culture in schools, culture is the way we do things around here, right? Climate is what we feel about being. So culture for us in schools is, there's a certain way that you can do things that makes your climate better. So, so I'm just, just trying to, just working, working the word here. I know it's a real broad term, but in library for me, I'm just wondering why that isn't in education or...
I take culture more as ethnicity and as religious and...
Art, traditions.
Tradition, exactly, yes. That's, that's what I'm taking culture, not as a, not as a culture, but somewhat our culture, the culture.
So it's a lot more diversity, so...
And I agree with you, though, the library, I think that belongs in education or I don't...
So maybe a subheading for me that says diversity, now culture makes sense to me there.
Cultural diversity.
Or just a diversity, like a one bullet. Bullet number three, diversity in a statement.
That's how I see culture.
Art and diversity should be considered culture.
So I'm hearing a suggestion that you move library to education.
Yes.
And I'm hearing a suggestion that a third, then now you've got two here, that you add a third one, that the headline is diversity.
Yes.
And we keep the arts and culture at the top.
Right.
Yes.
Arts and culture is the heading. You could also, I mean, it occurred to me as we were talking here, events could say, Lebanon supports a diversity of community events or something like that.
How about under inclusivity that we put inclusive, inclusivity? Say it for me, somebody.
Inclusivity.
And, and diverse, and diversity. So we use that as the diversity part, inclusivity and diversity. Lebanon embraces all community members and compassionate towards the need of people.
That's it. I like that. And that, that's attainable.
It is, and it makes more sense than making a whole nother bullet.
And it's, it's also more now.
Yeah.
This is what people are going for is now, organizations, diversity.
So let me say, see if I heard that, Paul. So you're suggesting that the third bullet under small town values says inclusivity and diversity? And Lebanon embraces a diversity of community members and is compassionate toward the needs of the people?
I think all's fine.
Community members?
I think, I think all is fine.
So just, just only changing the headline?
Yeah, because, because diversity adds that in there.
All right, so inclusivity and diversity. And then, so everybody seemed to like that.
Yes.
More subtle and, but still put the point there. So then, then there was the suggestion on arts and culture. So that, that leaves arts and culture is the same, but you could say Lebanon supports a diversity of community events, just, just kind of giving it, making it a little broader.
Right.
Um, and, people seemed to like that idea.
Yes.
And then, do you want to move library to education, it sounded like that made more sense to people?
That makes sense.
Okay.
What the bullets for arts and culture were, instead of events and arts, what if it was cultural events and fine arts or something, something a little more descriptive?
I don't think cultural though, because then that limits it to more like what we talked about, more like, uh, Cinco de Mayo or more of a, whereas.
The culture of Lebanon though, I mean, there's, you know.
Yeah, but.
I'm not calling it ethnic events, we're calling it cultural events too.
And you don't want to say fine arts, because I don't, you would not want.
That's a narrow definition.
Yeah, you go Lynn County Arts Guild and, you know.
And isn't arts part of culture too? I mean, when you really think about it, it's, yeah, I know.
Culture is what we make it.
Individual.
As a group of people. I mean, we have a culture going on right now in this room, you know, um, I think we're getting hung up on a word that really we shouldn't, I mean, it's, it's just saying that we want to focus on the arts and our culture. The arts will partially define that culture, our events will too, how we interact with each other.
So at the moment where we are is that, that, the focus area is arts and culture. Core value of events is Lebanon supports a diversity of community events that connect residents to each other and welcome people to the community. And then a second core value is arts, Lebanon nurtures creativity across all forms of art.
That says it all.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
Bring pretty good comfort.
Library going to education.
And library goes to education. So then, coming to the overall headline, um, and I wanted to walk through the weeds first, but then sort of what's going to be at the top of the page. The vision sounding board did some editing and discussing last night and, uh, finally settled on, I think with strong support, Lebanon is a friendly and thriving community. And let me sort of expand on that a little bit about what their thinking was on that really pretty simple statement. Was that Lebanon is friendly and it's a, it's a word that, that Lebanon has used for a long time and feels good about and it's, it's branding right there. And then thriving is both putting out there an aspiration and also saying, by gum, we're thriving now and everybody should know it. Everybody in Lebanon and everybody in other places, and it's really sort of putting it out there that you are a friendly and thriving community, which, you know, I'll, I'll be frank, as I tell my friends around Oregon that I'm going to Lebanon, you know, for something next week, that's not the first thing that comes up for them. Um, is thriving, and so I just, I'm just saying, you're putting it out there and I think, I think that was conscious by the sounding board, there was some discussion about whether, um, uh, there were several words in an earlier draft, it's, is a friendly and growing community, or a friendly and thriving community that is growing and pros, pros, and prosperity. And, and they thought, well, that's, it's kind of, there's so many words that it, it kind of gets hard to say, which I thought was a good edit, but there was a little, a little angst about cutting it this short because it didn't sort of acknowledge that the community's changing and evolving. And the prevailing wisdom at the end of the day was thriving implies change.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing.
I was pretty good with that, but I want to make sure that you all hear that they were unsure, but I think, I think at the end, I thought this was pretty sweet, but.
I love thriving as a descriptive.
Yes.
Because it encompasses so many other things, it's short and sweet.
Yeah, I like, I like that they didn't put the growth in there, I think that the thriving does imply that, to me, it does. Because we wouldn't be thriving if we weren't adaptable, and this town has been adaptable and we've changed where we've needed to change.
I really like this because it's something that you can memorize and easily remember. Most community vision statements, and Brian, you can back me up on this, usually the, the problem is that it's this awful run-on sentence where they try to capture a little piece of every focus area and stick it in there and it becomes this big thing that you, just, it doesn't do anything, because it, it tries to do too much. So, I really like this, um, it's something that we can brand in our own minds and, and make part of who we are and what we do.
I, I see this as outside of our trucks, I mean, I think this.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Friendly and thriving. Lebanon, friendly and thr- thriving.
Friendly and thriving.
I love it.
Friendly and thriving on the bottom, maybe there's a lot of.
I love it.
And this is really.
The town that thriving built. The town that thriving built. We only have a couple more hours.
So, I hear just enthusiasm for this and great potential for it.
Larger than ever.
The specific next steps to get to the finish line of this process has been going on for six or seven months is, on June 10th, the city council is scheduled to adopt this. And we got the website going, so, uh, we'll be putting additional information up there. The, the one piece that I want to make sure that you have is we will package up a comprehensive report on the survey, so you have the survey results that include the community meeting, the online survey, the paper surveys, the Spanish language surveys altogether. I think as you look at those charts, those bar charts, it'll look pretty much like what we just talked about, but it'll give you that chance to make sure you've seen all that data, so we'll provide that to you in the next week or two, so you'll have it before the council meeting. I guess I want to ask all of you for each other, uh, what do, what do, what else do you want to do in Lebanon, this is not invitation to make the consultants go further over budget, but, um, uh, I'm just trying to ask, you know, what else do you feel like you'd want to do to be comfortable adopting this on the 10th? The strawberry festival's coming up, the sound, the steering committee has some discussion about doing something at the strawberry festival if folks in town were motivated to do that. Um, a little bit of editing to do, I assume we'll make these edits and send a draft out and everybody will have it and you can chew on it. And we probably should make a graphic presentation of this, that's sort of a final package that you feel good about, but I just, I want to open it up for what, what else needs to happen so that you feel good about adopting this on June 10th?
Are we in budget? Now I'm concerned.
I, I, I've, the deal I made with Gary is we're doing it for the price we said, and I'm just, I'm just.
Okay.
I'm, we, we've been in the pro bono.
Simmered.
Phase of this project for several months.
We won't pay any bill over 50,000.
No, no, I'm just, I was just trying to make it clear. I don't, I don't, I don't have resources to like do four more community meetings or something like that, we're out of budget, so we're working for free at this point.
I think enough legwork, enough legwork's been done and I think it's, you know, now it's just tie up the loose ends and get it, get it to us and I, I don't really see a need to go back to the public with, for more, what do we do with more input, we're not going to, it's not going to be included by the 10th if you collect it on the, on the 7th, so, let's tie it up and let's bring it, let's bring it to council and get going on it.
I would like to see some kind of a public event where we roll it out and just have some kind of a big fun thing to do, I, I think it'd be kind of neat.
When it's all.
It would be neat at the festival, but I don't think we're going to be able to do that because we're not going to have it approved before the 10th. It would be neat.
Downtown on Main Street.
I know.
Do a, a dueling banjo thing to kind of incorporate.
I would be open to a meeting prior to the festival if it meant a lot to people to do a quick meet, noon meeting and approve this.
Yeah.
Or something.
And then to be able to have a presentation at the festival.
If that means anything.
It's an interesting idea.
I'd like to comment on Brian and Beth, uh, and the gentleman that just had a baby.
Andres.
Andres, you guys have been such a pleasure to work with, you've been so thorough.
Thank you.
And you've integrated yourself into our community, which I really didn't know how that was going to happen and you've done it. The information you've got back, I don't think you can do anymore because it's sort of, it built up itself, in other words, it, you got it and then you went back and you got it again, and you ca, you did exactly what you said, you, you toned it to where we knew exactly what everybody wanted, excellent, excellent job.
Oh, thank you so much.
I'm sorry you're working for free. Rebecca's got a motor home if you guys want to stick here. Probably not very clean though.
I, I think we should, we should keep in mind, we should keep in mind that as we move forward into the strategic plan, that at the front end of the strategic plan will be the opportunity to review what the vision is all about, so we ground ourselves in the vision as we venture into the planning part of it, so, that opportunity is coming up, I don't think it's anything we need to do before the council approves it. In fact, I don't think there's a whole lot more we need to do, I think it's been said and it's recorded now, uh, what else is there to do?
Give these guys a hell of a recommendation for the work they've done.
Yeah, you should do that, I guess.
So I do have one question, I know the steering committee, we keep asking you this each time we, we meet with you, so we're at 1100 now and how does that compare with other, um, cities you've done in the past?
So.
Of similar size?
You know, 1100 is all the different touches that we had, which will include some duplication of people that participated in several things, so I'll just acknowledge that. I really think that, that turnout for this has been great and I would say that you have, you have really communicated with the folks in Lebanon who were reachable for wanting to engage with what was going to happen. You know, if the goal, we got kind of into a discussion about this at the, at the sounding board last night, you know, if the goal had been to get a high number of Lebanon residents to respond to something, we would have designed a different process, I mean, this, this was trying to, we tried to, we kind of put out at the very beginning for the vision, or for the steering committee, kind of a menu of different things we could do and, and picked a variety of things that we thought would really engage people from different walks of life in the community in different ways, you know, we could have used the whole budget on a online survey and really spent a lot of time pinging people to do it to try and get those responses, but I don't actually think we would have had as thoughtful a conversation with Lebanon if we had done that. We might have hit a slightly higher number, you know, of people, but, I mean, the truth is, people got to participate in different ways and, you know, they filled out those stickers and we really did hear from the community. I feel great about it, in my own experience with quite a number of bigger communities, um, we got more penetration per capita here than I'm used to.
I would also say, um, one, a hidden surprise that happened is I think, I think we connected people in this community that weren't connected before, I like to think that I introduced you to some people that maybe you wouldn't have thought you had something in common with, but we gave you a, a reason to come together and a product that will bring people together, and that's super important to me, I always think when I leave a community, I want to leave more people connected than, than I did when I came, so I hope that happens.
And I want to say out loud with whatever microphone's going here, that Beth has done an amazing job of what she just said, she's really reached out, that vision sounding board, the one thing they all had in common is they had in, Beth had engaged them earlier in the process and they had opened up to her, and that's how they got on that group, and she's just been magnificent at dedicating her heart and soul to this project and really trying to connect with the community, so I'm grateful to her for that.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Gary, did you have something to say? Were you, did you want some? Okay, um, so did we want to try and do something at the strawberry festival or something beforehand or?
I don't think it was necessary.
Okay, okay. So at that point then, I guess we just need the, the final vision back and, and we'll take a look at it at our next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with Gary and his staff to make sure we have a presentable draft with words that everybody's kind of had a chance to.
Is there a summary document that you're going to present along with that?
Uh, our assumption is the final product for this will be a presentable document that has basically the same information on it as that one slide that has all the, all the statements on it together. And, uh, a summary of the input that we got, but we're not going to write a detailed analytical analysis of that.
Right, right, I think that's what we're all expecting.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you both for all your work, appreciate it.
Gotcha.
Your help.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and we'll do our voting and then, and then we'll have our food back there, we can eat some dinner and then we'll reconvene at 6 o'clock for our regular meeting.